With you, Judge Barry. Anybody that's here that wishes to get a copy of the agenda, it's on the table in the back. So with that, it's seven o'clock, so you all rise for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary before roll call attendance, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Here.
Ms. Sutler?
Here.
Ms. Farnowell?
Here.
Ms. Sully?
Here.
Ms. Paul?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, with that, everybody, all the members have received the minutes from the July 17th meeting. If there's no discussion regarding the minutes...
I'll make a motion except for minutes.
Okay. Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is Pataro subdivision.
Good evening, good evening. Last room before the board, they, I believe the public hearing was closed and the item was scheduled to be on for tonight for consideration of the resolution of approval. I did get a head copy of it, took a look at it, looks fine to me, so if the board's so inclined, we'd like to move forward with that adoption.
Okay. So the applicant's fine with the resolution as drafted, so with that, it's down to entertain a motion to, entertain a motion to approve the resolution of preliminary and final subdivision plot approval.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
All right, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you folks.
You're welcome, have a good evening. Okay, our next item on the agenda is special use, site plan and special use permit for CarMax Superstore.
Yes, good evening, Richard O'Rourke from Keene Bean, attorney for the application. Here tonight with me is Karen Maldzenowski, who worked diligently to resolve the sidewalk issues that we discussed at length, and we're pleased that, our understanding is that everything that we've submitted has been found to be successful in terms of meeting all of the comments that you made. John Thatcher's here tonight as well from CenterPoint Integrated Solutions, and we have Brian Pulsofer, who's a real estate manager with CarMax up from Richmond, Virginia. So we have had the opportunity to review the negative declaration resolution as well as the environmental assessment form, together with the resolution of approval for site plan, special permit. We're pleased with all of the elements of it, and we hope that you will act accordingly.
All right. Just, here, so just out of formality here, the, did we not, we voted on a negative declaration, correct?
Well, the negative declaration is baked into the...
It's based into the final, yeah, but I just, you know, it's a little, you're a little unusual to get, you know, separate documentation this time around.
That's true.
Right.
Given the history of the project, the length and its complexity, some of the reasoning, Jim and I talked about it, and we prepared part two and part three with an attachment.
Okay. All right. But we still have, okay, now we're, all right, so with that, does any of the board members have any questions regarding this project?
No.
No? Okay, so everybody satisfied the resolution, said you have no, no issues with it as it's drafted?
No.
All right, so with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as drafted.
So moved.
Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and we're very pleased that we were able to resolve all the issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Not with a bang.
All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding Mountain View Ranch lot line realignment.
Well, as you saw in the plans, it's pretty straightforward, we're just looking to realign the lot lines so properties make a little more sense than they have.
Okay, do we have state name and address for the record?
John Ostuni, 90 Smith Crossing Road, Wapinjor Falls.
Okay, thank you. All right, so before we go too far here, you've, you received both the letter from the planner and the town planner and a town engineer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so why don't you go through and kind of describe to us what it is that you're trying to achieve by this lot line realignment?
Okay, if you see on lot one is 30 acres, they're owned by my son, and the, his driveway kind of years ago went straight through the farm. It used to be called Hugh-Fran Lane, but it's been closed for 10 years now, so it just doesn't make any sense to have that cutting through the lots, so I'm just trying to make each of the lots and the buildings more accessible through the right driveways, not having to drive through the farm to get to all the other buildings.
All right. So with, entertain...
More specific information, maintenance agreements?
Yeah, with the, so basically it's just to take out the, hold on, all right, that's where you're talking about, so we had the front, where the front of the property was still in the, was all one lot, and everybody had to cross that?
Right.
Okay. All right, so with, with the memo, in regard to the memos, I guess there was some additional information that was asked to be added to the plans.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how to go, I couldn't get the surveyor to do that right away, because this took me six months to get accomplished, but...
Yeah.
So exactly what is it that we need, the, the distances from the buildings to the property lines, I didn't change any of the property lines near any of the buildings, so I didn't think that would be an issue. So, you know, I, I need time to get the surveyor to change anything that we need on this plot, but what specifically do we need?
So it was my understanding that some of the property lines had moved in adjacence to some of the buildings, so I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification on, you know, some of the buildings are labeled, but many of them are not, so to verify, you know, if, if these are barns, or if these are farmhouse, what's the, what's the function of them, that will tell me whether or not it's an accessory structure or a primary structure, and then, you know, how close it is to its nearest front, side, or rear lot line, and that will let me know whether or not the newly created lots are code compliant.
Okay, so the only buildings that are involved in this is a barn and a cottage, and they haven't been moved, the two lot lines adjacent to them haven't moved, so, you know, that's why I didn't really think we needed to go further with that, but, I mean, it's a, one's a barn and one's a cottage, and it's been that way since, you know, since they were built in the eighties.
So as we're changing these lots, if they... Well, how to explain this?
The health department also wants you to submit to them, so if they were just barns, that would be one thing, but if there's people living in cottages, the health department is going to want to know some, you know, know that before they stamp this plan to even be filed at the county, to make your lot line happen.
Okay, so...
So it's easier for us to, to even just know what they are, is this a barn, this is a silo, this is a cottage, this is workforce, whatever, farm.
Okay, that's easy enough, to just label those buildings.
We're asking for what the buildings are.
I could explain them now, but you want it...
They have to be on the...
On the plans, okay.
Yeah.
I could do that.
And I can take the scale, I mean, if you, if you don't have someone who can add those callouts, the proximity to the lot lines, I'll take the scale on the drawings, it'll take me a little bit longer, but I can, I can do that work, it's just typically something that we find on subdivision plots, evidence that the structures on these comply with the front yard and the side yard setbacks, and if these are lots from the eighties and they haven't changed, that's one thing, but these are new lots, and if we're creating new lots, we need to verify that they're compliant lots, that we're not creating lots that are not code compliant.
Okay, I understand. All right, I will, I'll have the surveyor mark them out, and so you want to see on the drawing the distance between the building and the property line?
The distance, so there's, there's different regulations for the front property line, side, and rear.
Right.
And so it would be the distance between, you know, the shortest distance between any of these buildings and the nearest front, side, or rear property line.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Um, not on my end, John.
No, we just, we asked for more clarification on the driveways, because based on the plans submitted, it still appears that there are driveways to buildings on lot four that cross over lots one and three, and then another what appears to be a drive on lot four that crosses onto lot one. So if, if it's going to remain that way, that's fine, we just need to make sure there's agreements in place and access easements.
Well, right, right now, because it's all being operated as one big farm, between my son and myself, and I have three lots, he has one lot, all of those that connect are so that I can get tractors and equipment from, you know, one part of the farm to the other. And another reason I'm doing this is so that if someday it got sold off in smaller, you know, in pieces, the way it is, no more lots, but it, each lot would have its individual access and wouldn't have to cross over, so those driveways could just be abolished at any time, they're not actually driveways, they're, they're farm roads.
Okay, I mean, could probably solve this with a note on the plan, then...
To show that, to show that the driveway to be abolished, if change of ownership?
Yeah, if, if, change of ownership in the future, these portions of driveways will be rendered, you know, not...
Yeah, I mean, it's, all depends on who, who has what, and...
Right.
That, that might be the easier way to do it.
Yeah, so that way it's just not assumed, you know, so somebody buys the property and they're, they're assuming they still have access over some of these roads.
Well, if they don't have an easement, or they don't have a, they don't have it on the plan...
Right, I know that, yeah, but just putting it on the plan will kind of resolve the issue.
Okay, would, would you want me to put it right on the survey, or a notation, or attachment, or...
Just a, a note that explains, you know, what we just talked about, that, that's fine.
That could just come from a surveyor.
The note would be something to the effect of, you know, any road shown on this subdivision plat does not confer access, you know, should title, you know, should the lots be sold to subsequent purchasers?
If the ownership, if the ownership of the lot changes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's one of the, I mean, and I've had this issue in other, you know, where you've had subdivisions, where you've had roads shown on the plat where, you know, I think anyone looking at it would assume that, you know, it does convey access, you know, over those roads, so, I don't, you know, and how that would happen, I, you know, I don't know, so...
Okay. So the question is, the surveyor can just update this map, you think?
Um...
Or is it going to be...
He's been tough to get a hold of.
Huh?
But he's been hard to get a hold of over the last few months, but...
They all are.
I will work on it, I mean, I could, yeah, I guess, you're going to need all new copies of a new survey, I know I got 11 or 12 copies sent in last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's no new lots being created, the lines are only being moved around.
Yeah.
Yeah, just trying to make better sense of each lot.
John, do you have addresses for all the structures?
Yeah, that's been a big confusion over the years.
911 has been honest about a lot of things, and if someone got hurt at a barn, they can't be running around in their barns, so do, do each lot have its own address, and then the buildings on that lot marked accordingly?
They already do.
They are.
They've been that way for years, and that's why, it's just a matter of who owns the parcel, but the driveway is marked, the house matches, the barns match, they all have addresses on, we went through it all with 911 twice.
Well, this is going to go to the Fire Prevention Bureau, so I just thought it's better to ask that question, because that would be a question they would have.
Oh, yeah, there's been, I've changed the signage, and it's been so much confusion over the years, because there was one access to the entire property when I bought the place, and so, I think this cleans it all up, we're not looking to do any building or any subdividing, just want to clean up the lines, so everything makes sense if something happens and needs to be sold.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make the changes and submit them, and hopefully for the next meeting. All right, thank you.
Okay.
So for purposes of secret, it's a type two?
Yeah. Assuming, assuming that all the lots are code compliant, if we needed to create a lot that wasn't, I think it would be unlisted, but if all of the setbacks check out, it'll be a type two, and secret will be concluded.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll await the revision for this one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so our next item on the agenda this evening is site plan and special use permit for U-Haul Stage Door Road.
Good evening.
Evening.
Bill Povell, engineer for the applicant. We're here tonight with the full site plan submission, as you're aware, we were in here two times for conceptual, for a U-Haul facility on four parcels that would be combined on one Stage Door Road, on the corner of Route 9, small portion fronts on old Route 9, and then all along Stage Door Road. Again, we developed the plans further, we provided a lot of engineering details, including different infrastructure, components that would go along in supporting the three buildings. The front building is a three-story building, which would be primarily for indoor storage, and on the middle floor, which would be at grade, would be for retail, with the property being in the H highway business zone. The use for indoor storage is a special use permit, the retail component is a permitted use, and then we're proposing a second warehouse building in the back, and warehouse is a permitted use. Going back to the front building, with the code only restricting the stories to two and a half, we are proposing three, so we would need a variance for that. With this particular plan, we are proposing that the first floor be below grade, so when you're looking at the building from Route 9, it would look like a two-story building, which would be consistent with the code. So with the plans that we developed, we're showing grading and proposing fill around the front of the building, which would bring that grade up, so that you would see that second, you know, mimic a two-story building.
Yep.
With this particular building, we are locating it consistent with the existing building, which will be removed, where it's relatively close to the front property line, but the frontage along Route 9 has a really wide area between the edge of pavement and the actual property line, so that's over and above what would be a typical shoulder distance. So with this particular plan, the building's 100 feet from the edge of Route 9, which is consistent with a typical minimum setback for the state road, because of the extra area that's actually in front of the parcel, that's within the DOT right of way. And the reason for that is in the past, Route 9 used to go close to this building, and then when they realigned Route 9, they pulled it further away, and that's why there's a wide frontage there. So a second variance would be needed for the, the front yard, but again, we're consistent with the intent of, of the zoning. And then lastly, with the building, we would need a, our floor area ratio between the three floors is point, approximately .5, where the maximum's .4. So that would also be a, an additional variance that would be required, or area variance with this particular layout. And again, this is all consistent with the conceptual discussions that we originally presented to the board. The back building will be for the U-boxes, it's a warehouse, we are proposing a small office for the drivers in the house, the warehouse workers. The U-boxes are just boxes that are sent out to a site where people can load them up, and then they would temporarily store them in the warehouse before they need to bring them to another location or back. And it's also, the intent of it is to store the unused U-boxes, so that would have a loading dock, and because of that component, we did design the parking lot and the access aisles throughout the site for WB67, which is a full semi-tractor trailer, and we did show that in the plans. So as far as track, truck access throughout the site plan, we've laid this out and designed to accommodate that. What we did change from the conceptual plan is we had four access points onto old, onto Stage Door Road, but because of the grading in the back of building two, it was just getting too steep to make that work, and what we did is we reworked the, the parking and maneuvering area to accommodate the trucks to be able to pull in either one of the two entrances and work their way around and make a U-turn and come back, back out, and again, that's all demonstrated in the plans. With this particular layout, we are going to be filling and disturbing the town 100-foot buffer for the isolated wet area to the north, which separates this property with the adjacent It's necessary that we do this because the parcel is so narrow for majority of it. We did propose some retaining walls to minimize some of the disturbances, we are proposing to put the stormwater management facilities, which will capture all the runoff, treat the runoff before it discharges to the wetland, we are showing that on the northern edge of the property, so that's vegetated improvements, which will help buffer and treat any runoff into the wetlands. In the back corner, we are proposing a wetland mitigation area, with this particular plan, we would be, we are applying for a wetland disturbance permit to disturb .3 acres, and we are proposing .3 acres of mitigation in the back, so we would be replacing the wetland area on a one-to-one basis. With this particular wet, wetland area, it is a drainage area where a lot of the properties to the north have already graded up to the wetland line itself, and probably over the years, maybe into it. So with, with that current development, and speaking with our wetland consultant, it's a low-value wetland because of what's going on around it, you have Route 9 drainage, discharging into it, et cetera. So for those reasons, we feel this is appropriate, especially with the mitigation and the improvement to the wetland area.
Okay.
As far as parking, going through the parking calculations, there really is no parking rate for self-storage, so we did apply the storage parking calculation, which is one spot for every thousand square feet, so that's why the required parking is so much higher than what we're proposing. With this particular layout and U-Haul's corporate model, they really don't get any additional parking for the indoor storage, it's mostly in the loading spots where people come in, they load, or they pull in to unload, and then they leave. There are other spots for the occasional customer that would need to go into the storage unit, come back, but that's at a minimum. We're proposing five display areas, again, consistent with what we were proposing with the conceptual layout, because of the building, pretty much blocking all the visibility from Route 9, which is where the majority of the traffic is, as everybody knows, that gives them five places to show the truck rentals or the trailer rentals. As far as these buildings will need to be sprinklered, and we are proposing a storage tank in the back, if you look at the plan, it's the round circle to the back, and that would be a 24-foot-high-by-30-foot-diameter storage tank to provide 120,000 gallons that would be needed for the sprinkler systems. And with that, we would need a small building to house any of the pumping equipment to convey the water to the buildings, so we are showing that in the back. As far as the architecture, I have the drawing. Um, as far as the architecture, um, I have the drawing. Uh, so this is the same, um, elevation that we came back with, with alternative three, um, where we're showing the, the fill around the building, so it looks like a two-story building. Um, this shows the stone, um, uh, Wayne's coating that goes around the bottom, um, and the different architectural features that, uh, were generated based, based on the initial, uh, comments. And then, uh, lastly... Again, these are the same drawings with the signage, um, that we were in here last time with. Um, I'll leave that one up for now. But, um, in speaking with, uh, U-Haul, um, they felt with their corporate image, you know, this is their corporate model as far as signage, um, and they felt it's important to continue to propose it, uh, for the board's consideration. Um, with the frontage on Route nine, you have the U-Haul center sign. And then, um, you could see the drive-in storage and the U-Haul sign which faces old Route nine in the beginning of Stage Door Road. And then behind the building, um, again, it's their corporate signage is being shown, um, which you would not see from Route nine or from old State Road. This would be once you got into the parking lot between the two buildings. Um, and then you could see, uh, the sign is just proposed in that area. Um, here with William, do you have anything to add? William Rodriguez is here with, uh, U-Haul. So that's, that's a quick overview on where we're at.
Yeah. All right. So let's talk about the signage real quick, 'cause I, I remember us having a conversation regarding signage when we were here for the conceptual and it was kinda like, was, the thought was to kinda shrink it down. You know, you didn't need as much that's out there. Uh, you know, especially on the back of the building. I mean, some of those signs back there, they were, you know, doesn't really, really not serving much of a purpose, especially if you're not selling it to the, you know, the people driving by. 'Cause I think that was one of the issues. You want everybody to see it. And once you're on the site and you're looking at directional signage, you know, to point them into a certain direction, usually those signs can be much smaller. So they pull in, you know, they can see, all right, you know, this is, you know, drive-through storage area or whatever to pull in, or loading area. I mean, usually those are much smaller signs. They don't need to have to be, you know, you know, as big, um, you know, as all the signage on the front of the building. Um, you know, where people may be looking at it at a, you know, further distance away as you're approaching. So, I mean, it might be something you wanna think about in terms of, you know, scaling back. But I, I think from earlier discussion, I don't believe that the board feels that what's here kinda represents what should be there. And then, you know, the variances, um, you know, we, we try to make it, try to work out the signage here and not just automatically go for a variance. Um, and if you do wanna go, again, the board's gonna, is gonna basically give a negative recommendation to the zoning board. And, you know, we can discuss why, you know, for different reasons. But most of the times, as long as I've been on this board, um, we haven't sent any app, any signed permits, um, or signed applications to the ZBA. Everything usually for a new project would start here. Um, so we kinda like to, hopefully you guys can go and reconsider, um, what you have on the building currently.
And that's for the rear of the building, of the Stage Door Road?
I think, look at it all, I think. I, I'm, I'm only speaking for myself. I don't know what everybody else feels about the front of the building. Um, you feel what's there is, um, you know, the, uh, go back to it. I mean, it looks like it's just the, the three signs on the front. I don't know what everybody's feeling is with that.
It's actually one side.
Well, actually the-
On the Route nine frontage.
Right.
And two signs on the old Route nine slash-
On the old Route nine side.
Intersection of Stage Door Road.
The initial plan had a little bit more signage over the model room doors and we got rid of those, that signage with the new layout that we did.
Is it within the square footage? I don't, I mean, I really can't tell if it's-
No, I believe it's, I believe everything's exceeding, correct, Malcolm?
Yeah.
I didn't check the sizes, but I, just looking in the comment letter, it says, uh-
I listed it in the-
There's fifteen individual sign variances.
Right. And I did list everything, uh, all the sign variances, I did list in the narrative that you have.
Okay.
Um, and not, no, not all the signs exceed the, uh, required. There are signs that work within that square footage.
That work within the-
Yes.
But even those signs would require variance for additional signage, right?
Some of them.
Yeah.
How tall are the letters and the drive-in storage?
Um, I actually don't know that off the top of my head. I would have to find out what that is exactly.
They look at least as big, if not bigger, than the font in the U-Haul sign itself.
I just have the square footage, um, which I believe I have right here.
Pretty much the size of like the font.
Uh, the whole thing is twenty-four, uh, well, they're, they're two-foot high because it's, uh, twelve-point-six-two feet long and the square, square area is twenty-five-point-two. So there, uh, that would make them two feet in, in height, twenty-four inches.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. It's kinda backtracking, it's not really about the signs. Um, number one, is there any way that you'd consider or be able to put an underground water tank so we don't have something? And I just don't know if that's a thing, but I just, uh, just to mitigate all the buildings. And number two, you guys have a storage building in Marlboro. I don't know if this is the same square footage as that, uh, if you can tell me that, because that is significantly smaller looks-wise, so I don't know if the square footage is that much smaller. Um, and if it isn't, if there's a way we can mitigate the size of this building to kinda mimic that, 'cause it looks really nice.
Right. The difference between that facility and this facility is that lot is more narrow, but much deeper.
Okay.
So it's like taking the buildings and turning them ninety degrees.
Okay.
So they're really deep because they have the depth of the lot, which we don't have here.
Right.
And what about the underground water? Is that a-
Um, it's something we can look into. Um, it does bring in, um, other things to consider. Um, you know, we did locate that in the back, um, where there's industrial buildings back there.
Yeah.
It, it's something that won't be seen from Route nine, um, or even, it's probably blocked by the building, even on old, uh, Route nine. So you wouldn't see it till you drove up, um, on, onto Stage Door Road, once you got past the building.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure the health department would allow it. They, they discourage buried water storage tanks, so-
Yeah.
Um, they may allow you to partially bury it, but I, I'm not sure.
There's, there's different things to consider with that, um, which-
It's just a question.
Yeah.
But on that note, regarding the size of the building, you are requesting, or you will be requesting, a floor area variance. Yeah?
Correct.
From point four to point five.
Yes.
Okay. Um, just to keep in consideration when thinking about the mass of the building, that it does exceed the allowable floor area ratio.
The Marlboro site was also a brick facade, uh, but that wasn't an option for this. I think that'd be a much better fit for this area.
Yeah, they no longer use that, that layout due to, um, basically the maintenance over the year, over the years. They have tried that in multiple locations throughout the, basically, US and Canada. And just the man, the maintenance over time is tedious. So that's why they moved, they moved to pretty much the previous layout and then we redid it based on the notes from the initial two meetings to this, to this concept.
Right. So what's the, what's the proposed material to be used on the front now, on the, um, on the corner where it comes up there?
I just think that's a much better look. It's the first building we have, uh, as you drive up nine into our town, you know?
Yeah. It's more of a Hampton style kinda, than just a block.
Right.
So you're looking to consider brick on that front corner bump-out area?
Well, we have pictures of the Marlboro building and that, that, the design of that was very nice. I, I think it's a much better look for this town.
So pretty much for the glasses and this layout.
Yeah, the, the tan. So that's something we can, that's something we can, uh, go back and-
Do you wanna see that? Do you wanna see it?
No, no, I know what we're talking about.
They know, it just, they, yeah, it just wasn't proposed last time. Right. So, um-
Well, the last time when we initially spoke about it and I took it back to the board from the initial conversation-
Right.
I mentioned basically that facility and that was the explanation that was given.
Well, I don't remember talking about the detail, the, you know, the materials and things like that. I remember we, we kinda talked about it all but, you know, we talked about the facility being there. And I think what happened was is after that last conversation, people have gone over there to take a look at it. So, um, so again, the-
So that is something, we will go back and talk to that.
Yeah.
Um, consideration for sure.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right. Any other items anybody wants to bring up before we just-
Looking at your plan, there's a dotted red line denoted A-nine, A-ten. That's the actual wetlands?
Correct.
Or is that the buffer?
No, that's the wetland line.
'Cause the building is very, seems, how far off of that are you?
Off the wetland line?
Yeah.
Um, we're relatively close to it in the center area.
And building one goes into it, yeah?
Yeah. Bill, I'm gonna try and do this from here, but I-
How do the mitigation, does that work?
Building one, this is the existing wetland in the front here. It jets out, so that's why we're proposing to disturb this area. And the rest of the line comes in from here and runs along where we got the wall, put the wall, gets the wetland, and then out.
Right.
And then this is a whole bio-retention area. So we have four bags for free, uh, pre-treatment before we go into the bio-retention area. And then here it's treated before it's discharged into the water.
You mentioned point three acres of wetland disturbance and point three acres of wetland mitigation area.
Correct.
Do you have a, uh, either in acres or square footage, uh, how much area of the wetland buffer is being disturbed?
It's pretty, because of the way the site is, we're disturbing pretty much all of the buffer. Um, because the buffer jets out and encompasses a majority of the, of the, uh-
What site?
Of the site, especially through the center, because it, the property's only a hundred and forty feet approximately in, in the center. So we are proposing the, um, to disturb the buffer.
And you mentioned that you had a wetland specialist. I didn't see a wetland report in the submission. Do you have one?
We did not prepare a report. Um, we've been working with, uh, Mike Nowicki of Ecological Solutions on this, 'cause we, this is, um, a second site plan, as the board may remember.
The other storage facility on the site-
Right. We did get an approval for indoor storage in the existing building. Um, and-
Right. But this, this, this particular one adds an additional building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this, this-
Right. So that, uh, everything that was involved with that goes away, whereas this has a little additional-
That's when we were dealing, uh, somewhat with the wetlands at that time. And that's, that's when we had, uh, Mike involved, which he still is involved.
Yeah.
It's adding a second building, but it's also demolishing the existing building and replacing it with a larger building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, at the, at a minimum, I guess we still need, we need an updated report. I think that's what you're getting at. Yeah. Um, any other questions regarding the wetlands? Just the, the parking, I guess, I make. It's kinda need to try to, I guess, come up with some kinda justification for the, um, you know, the parking with the reduced numbers that are being proposed. Does U-Haul-
I mean, I could, I could work parking numbers into the shunting lanes.
Yeah. I was just gonna say that maybe that U-Haul has some, you know, from other sites, you know, similar, you know, similar size.
Okay.
Might be able to provide some accurate, maybe some accurate numbers of what those facilities, the number of trips to and from the, the facility would be, you know, based upon, you know, a day a week and, you know, time of day.
Something on that would be useful and then we can have our traffic guys review it and give more detailed recommendations to the board as to the suitability of, of the proposed parking scheme.
Just in that way, that way it kinda justifies the numbers we have, or at least that you've submitted to us here. Kinda gives us an idea. All right. Um, okay. So with that, uh, board members don't have any more questions? Turn it over to the staff real quick. I'll let Malcolm, I'll let you go ahead and just do whatever items that we didn't touch on, I guess, at this point.
We've touched on, on many of them. Uh, my first item was the, the variances and the waivers that are being requested. Just to go over that one more time. It's a height variance from two-point-five to three. Uh, it's a front yard setback, uh, seventy-five feet is required. They're providing twenty-five-point-nine, but as we discussed, the, that's because the, you know, the DOT owns a considerable amount of front yard area.
Right, the frontage there.
Um, and then a floor area ratio variance of point four to point five.
Yeah.
Um, and then, of course, the fifteen, uh, sign waivers that are being requested.
Yeah.
Um, the EAF identifies, um, the Blandings Turtle and the Indiana Bat. Um, if we can get some, uh, something back from the DEC, if you can reach out to them, um, I know that you've identified the wetland area as a, as a, as a low value, um, but with the Blandings Turtle being pinged on that, we'll want the DEC to look at this.
And what we can do, um, I could have Mike also include that in his, his biological, uh-
Yeah, exactly.
Report.
'Cause that goes right into wetlands, which is, you know, we've got a, a wetland disturbance and a wetland mitigation. If we can get that wetland report from Mike, um, I'll have our wetland specialist review that and the mitigation plan and we'll get more specific recommendations.
And I believe, I'm trying to remember, but this area is, is more clay. It's not gravel. We're planting turtles, like gravelly soils, from what I understand. So, so I don't think the habitat-
Very developed around it. I mean, it's a pretty small pocket.
So I'll have him get into that with his report.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then if we can get anything back from DE, you should start the DEC process 'cause it can take-
Yep.
-uh, time. Um, you know, we talked about parking. If we can get something from you on parking, I can have Steve look at that. Um, we'll need the Fire Prevention Bureau to weigh in, but the truck turning radii, um, is designed for a truck, then, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I believe that it is larger than-
Yeah.
-fire equipment, so I'm not expecting anything.
Yeah, it's a tractor, if a tractor trailer can navigate, uh, majority of that site. Fire trucks should, but let them, yeah, let them weigh in and make comments, yeah.
Um, and then the town superintendent of highways for the site distance on the, uh, curbs. 'Cause you're getting, are both of those new or is one of those existing? I know at least one of them is new, right?
Yeah, the, the front one's very close to where the existing is. We're reworking it. And the, the second one is a new- And the, the second one is a new curb cut.
Okay.
And then we have a gravel driveway right now to the back that would be removed.
Okay.
Um, but there's plenty of site distance out there. You can, you could pretty much see the entire road.
Yeah.
And there's, there's four curbs now?
No.
There's two now?
Now is two.
There's two now and then the gravel, okay. That's it from me, John, do you have anything?
Yeah, uh, we, we touched on most of this. We pointed out the, you know, outside regulatory agency approvals that you need. Asked you to look at a couple of potential conflicts with the utility layouts. And, um, and then we had several comments on the SWIP report. I'm not going to go through those in detail right now since it's at the preliminary stage.
Okay. So I mean, I guess there's a few, a few items just to kind of look into and get addressed. Any other questions that you guys have for us?
Nope.
Alright.
Is this something that we can start distribution for lead agency or?
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, I guess we'll, to do, I guess the decision comes in whether we're going to do a coordinator review for SEACR.
Yeah.
So-
It's not a DEC or federal wetland, right? It's just a town wetland?
Just a town wetland.
Yeah. So that, out of the agencies involved, but-
But they've still got Blandings Turtle-
They still have to, they still have to go in front of the, right, they still have to go in front of the ZBA as well, so the ZBA.
Health Department's involved.
Health Department, right.
You don't need anything from DOT, but-
We will need, uh, we may need to, in order to get the fill-in, we may need some kind of grading permit from DOT.
That's a lot of agencies. We should probably do a coordinator review.
Yes, there's a bunch of people involved with this. So with that, um, entertain a motion for the board to circulate for lead agency.
So moved.
Okay, motion's made. Have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
On that note, do you, after this evening, do you see any reason why you would need to revise any portions of the EAF? Or can we circulate with that?
Uh, no.
Okay.
You know, just looking at this, I'd be working with, pretty much within everything that we've already done.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
We're all good. We'll, we'll await the, we'll await the revised submission. We'll go from there.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda this evening is the Kimmel subdivision.
Good evening, I'm Eric Rogie with Hudson Land Design, engineer for The Applicant. We made a, first submission in a while. We, we finally made it through the DEC's review process for the Blandings Turtles. They were happy with our mitigation measures. It really amounted to some, yeah, it took a while, took a lot of prodding.
Got to save the turtles.
It was just a lot of fencing and notes are really what it, what we wound up with. We also worked through the Health Department's review. We got our test well in. It came back good. We had to do some, uh, adjustments to one of the lots because they, they didn't like the existing well. We had to move the well, which required- We had to do a jut out on the back of Lot One to get to the well to maintain separation from, from all the upstream septics. So that was really, those were really only two things that have changed since we were last here. I think we closed the public hearing the last time we were here, but we were waiting on SEACR. We were waiting on the DEC and Department of Health, so I think we'd like to get to the next then.
Alright, um, so I mean, it seems like, it seems like everything's gotten addressed, um, that needs to be addressed. I mean, other than, we could just kind of go through the, I mean, the two letters real quick. But, um, if you want to touch on yours, Malcolm, real quick. I mean, it seems like they've addressed, I mean, they just discussed everything that needs to be done.
All of the items in my letter are essentially, you know, for, for purposes of maintaining a record of, of how previous comments have been addressed and where they stand right now. There had been an issue with site distance, but that has been addressed. There had been an issue, we needed to hear back from the DEC on the Blandings Turtle.
Yep.
That has been approved. And the only thing left is for the board to consider making a determination under SEACR.
Yep.
And that's our last outstanding item.
Okay. And then, John, as well, your, your comments are pretty much-
Yeah, they're, they're pretty straightforward. We just, to avoid confusion during the building permit process, we just asked to provide a call out on each lot for how wide and how much of the driveway needs to be paved. And, um, then there's clearing that's needed for Lot Two, site clearing that's needed for Lot Two over Lot Three. So there's, we need a, a sight line easement over that and just a description, a legal description to be reviewed by the town attorney. And that was it. I mean, Health Department approval, it sounds like they're just waiting for the town at this point.
Waiting for us, alright. So at this point, um, I guess we can go ahead and approve to have you draft a resolution of approval with the, you know, the open conditions that are still left to be met here.
And that's for approval of the subdivision and for negative declaration?
Sub, yeah, negative declaration and sub, and subdivision approval.
Okay.
So with that, entertain a motion to have the, have the planner draft the negative declaration approval.
I'll make that motion.
And also subdivision approval.
Second.
So.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? See, none, motion carries, so.
Just a, just a one question regarding the condition for the Blandings Turtle construction. Can that be wrote on the map or?
It's, it's shown on the map, I believe. The red fencing and turnarounds, the notes, I mean, the, the correspondence with the DEC included approval of the plans as drafted.
Okay.
Yeah, they said if we follow the plans, there's no permit necessary and that, that's the end of it.
Yeah.
And those are just temporary fencing during construction, those are permanent fencing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they get to remove it at the end of the day. Okay, alright. Alright, so then I guess we'll, um, just once the planner drafts the resolution, we'll vote out at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Alright, have a good evening. Alright, welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is Joey Estates.
Good evening, my name is John Getz. I'm The Applicant. My engineer, I just got off the phone with her. She had a delay. She's only a few miles down the road, with the board mind allowing us to go next. She, she's literally on Route Nine.
Okay, um, well, I guess we can, we can go through the other items on the agenda and then put you on at the end.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay. So with that, we'll go to the next item, which is a conceptual review for Moonrise Bagels. Is there anyone here for Moonrise Bagels?
Do you want me to check the hall?
Yeah, just double check, see if, uh- Do you want? Okay. Europe? Yeah, right?
Sorry, we're late. Good evening, uh, my name is Steve Tinkelman from Tinkelman Architecture. Thank you for putting us on the agenda for tonight. We're here, uh, as a follow on Greenbaum Square. Like, as you know, we had a fire there in the beginning of this year and it unfortunately became more complicated than we thought. And, uh, we're only now getting ready to, you know, open up the, the first tenant back in the space. In the process, um, excuse me, we lost two tenants, um, the Cryo Spa and State Farm. And it's the nature of small business and difficulty of trying to keep things going when you don't have a premise and, and all that. So, um, you know, again, hard work and, uh, we're just about ready to, you know, put two of the, our remaining tenants back online, which is the Miracle Ear and the Verizon Store. So we have an opportunity that came to us, you know, in the last couple of weeks that we got excited about. And, uh, one is because of who the people were and, and two, um, what it could do to the energy in the center, which is this bagel, uh, Moonrise Bagel. It's an operation that currently runs in Woodstock and they have one location there. And what we liked about it was, first of all, the product, you know, because we all like food and the, the product was something that is, doesn't exist in the marketplace right now. So, um, that was the first part about it. But it was also the, uh, the nature of the people and what their business intent was and what we liked about, how hardworking they were and such. And then the other thing we realized, it, when we said, well, this would be a really good opportunity to have a good tenant in the Cryo space, um, we realized that, that we had a covenant, you know, from your board previously when we got approval for the project to not put food in that building. And, um, in, in fact, you know, the, there was a, a interesting levels of study for parking during the process and, you know, we, we weren't really quite sure how the Heritage Restaurant was going to impact, um, you know, the whole center. And sure enough, in the first, a couple of months, they were extremely busy and they've leveled off into a successful, but, you know, a little bit more of a normative, um, operating business. And so we, in the last couple of years, um, have not had any issues with parking at all. And, uh, that was a pleasant surprise and it's, I think, the nature of, um, the, the businesses that we have in the center building, which are really office use buil-, uh, businesses. The Heritage is busy as, at nighttime or on, on weekends. And, uh, the bank also doesn't have the same level of parking or, or, uh, customer, um, visits as they once did because of electronic banking and all that. But, but, you know, diving deeper into this, um, we realized that the operation hours of this business really is perfect for, you know, you know, kind of a shared parking arrangement. They're open at seven o'clock in the morning where nobody else is open in the center and they, in their current operation, they close at three o'clock. Actually, it's two o'clock during the week and three o'clock on the weekends. So it kind of works counter cyclical with the, if that's the right term, with, with the other businesses that are there. And, uh, and, and therefore, not only will it not be a problem, but it'll help use the center during the morning hours and, and such. So we felt, uh, that we'd like to come in front of you and this is a very, uh, project-specific request here that we're only asking for this approval for this use in this location. And, um, and again, the only reason for, uh, or the only reasons for asking for this were, again, we think it's a really good, uh, use, given the sequencing of timing, the quality of what they're going to do and what it brings to the community. And, um, and, and so we were comfortable to bring it before you. So, uh, that's the long and short of it. We have a package in front of you. I think we also brought, um, their, um, their menu, if anybody wants to see it. Did you get the menu?
No.
This, this whole thing is the menu?
No, it's, um, there's-
Yeah, we can, you want to hand it out? So as you can see, the, the product is interesting. You have in your site plan the other part of what's turned out to be successful in the center and not necessarily intentional. Sometimes success is luck, but the planning has the parking spread out really well-balanced amongst all the three buildings there. As you can see in the suite one, that's the Cryo space. It has, um, you know, it has a couple of windows in there. The plan is really mostly a takeout business also, so there's, there's, uh, there, there hasn't been a final plan, but the conversation with the tenant is a four to seven small tables. And, you know, there's no waitress service or waiter service, whatever the term is today. And, um, you know, again, um, you know, part, partly this is a request for hardship. You know, it started out that way, but then we realized also that, um, this is a real value add to the community. So thank you for letting me present this idea. If you have any questions, um-
Okay. So I do remember, um, I do remember when this originally was in front of us the last time for some changes to the, um, to the Heritage Building. There was a bunch of things that got, um, there was, I guess, some small additions put on that building. But one of the big concerns was the, uh, shared parking analysis that we went around and around and around circles for probably three or four months with.
At least.
So, the, so with this, I guess we're going to be looking for that to be, I guess, updated to show, you know, that the different usage is not going to impact, you know, the, either the restaurant or the bank, I guess, and not, and then the overall parking won't be exceeded.
Right.
You know, because again, it's, you know, the Heritage, you know, they're doing very well there. And you could see that on, you know, Sergeant Palmetiere Way, when everybody parks on the back. So parking is still, you know, a question. So it's just, you know, I just wanted to throw it out there because it's not quite, um, you know, it's not all the time, but there have been, you know, times where there are people parking out there along the back.
Right.
Okay.
Chair, one thing, if I forgot to, in my presentation, if this is helpful. Also, it's about the parking itself, is that, uh, you know, with the, with the, the way the ordinance is, is drafted, the number of square feet and the spaces that would be required for Moonrise versus the Cryo Spa, the difference is six spaces. So, you know, it's, it's not a significant change here. Again, um, I could use some guidance from you in terms of the parking study, because if we did parking count there, you know, in the morning through two o'clock in the afternoon, that would be the most accurate picture. Is that what you're kind of looking for?
Yeah. But, yeah, but I mean, just, you know, to amend what you currently have, I guess, so that the board can approve. I mean, if you're just changing that one window at a time, it's just somebody updating that, you know, that previous plan. You know, to, to reflect what you're proposing here. you know, that previous plan, you know, to reflect what you're proposing here. Would any of the board members have any questions for this? Yeah. Okay. Not proposing any outdoor seating, any of that type of thing?
No.
All right. So when we come down to this, it's procedurally, I mean, this is a, you know, it is a conceptual review, and we do have to amend the resolution that was previously approved. So the question is, does this have to go forward for a full submission at this point?
I don't, I don't think it necessarily needs a full, you know, submission in that, is the space?
Space is there.
I mean, space isn't, is the size of space changing?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the only thing really you're amending is...
You're amending, you're amending the resolution that was previously approved.
So it's, you know, technically it's an amended site plan resolution, but it's a Type 2 action.
Yeah.
You know, there's no environmental issues with respect to it.
And I'm hoping the traffic work will be minimal, that you'll be able to find the previous parking study amended with your new information and that we'll be able to review that with a traffic engineer, and there won't be red flags there. And so with that, you know, I mean, they're not changing anything on the site plan beyond...
Right. Nothing physically is changing, right.
They're just amending that resolution.
It's just the analysis. It's the analysis for parking, and then also the wordage in there to, you know, to strike out the, you know, the usage in the building. And I guess reword it in a way that's going to limit it, I'm assuming, to one? I mean, are we going to allow this to be a, you know, as food service to be allowed in this building altogether?
Well, that's, I mean, probably...
That's the question.
I think this should be site-specific, and we talked about this, because you don't want to take out no restaurant, because this is a restaurant of sorts.
Right.
So you wouldn't want, three years down the road, a pizza or a Chinese restaurant would come or a small bistro, because then that would go against the parking that you initially put in place with that note.
Yeah. That's more than fair. I mean, I think...
And I think this should just be, because this is a morning lunch business, and it's very specific.
Right. It's a limited, right. They're proposing it as a limited use.
That's the other, you know, the other option is to say, you know, put limits on the hours of operation.
Right. Well, and then we're getting, right, then we're getting into the special use permit items with limiting operation, you know, operational hours and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Right. No, no, no. I know it's what they're proposing, right. So that's, what I'm getting at is that they need to make a full submission, or at least make a, because again, this is a conceptual review.
No, I understand. I'm just, but, you know, they're not changing the space. They're not changing. I mean, what would the submission have, other than a copy of the application?
Right, right.
And the parking stuff, and the updated parking stuff.
Okay.
And we would...
So Mike, so again, now, if we do approve this tonight, we're talking about voting on a resolution another night?
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, you're technically, you know, there's technically no application.
All right, I'm going to cut to the chase. So they've made the submission, you know, at a limited fee. There's no escrow on file to pay the staff to go ahead and do what you need to do.
Right.
So do I need to ask him to provide an escrow?
Yes.
Yes.
To cover your expenses?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I mean, it would just be, so the application would be submitted.
Right. I'm trying, all right. Okay. So that's what I'm getting at. That's, I'm trying to get to this. You're trying to make this as easy as possible, which I am too.
Yeah.
Okay? I just want to get straight answer. That's all. All right. So at the end of the day, I'll put it to the rest of the board. I'd like, you know, what you have there, but if you could just, again, just update the parking analysis. The planner can review that, just to make sure that everything works. And then at this point here, if none of the board members have any questions, entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the planner, to go ahead and rewrite the resolution and review the parking analysis to make sure it complies with what we've discussed about this evening.
I'll make it.
Hmm? Make the motion? Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
And then a second procedural issue on the public hearing.
Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none. Is there a question?
And the second procedural issue would be a vote to waive any public hearing for the amended site plan application.
Okay. So with that as well, somebody want to make a motion to waive the public hearing?
Some would.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made. Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Okay.
And we're going to vote on the escrow now?
Huh?
You're not going to vote on the escrow?
On the escrow? I mean, it's going to be, it's a...
I'll talk to Steve in the morning.
Yeah.
He will take care of that.
All right.
We're going to try to be back next month, so thank you. Appreciate this very much.
Okay. You're welcome. All right. All right. So let's go back to our previous discussion that was asked to be adjourned to this point of the meeting, which is Joey Estates on Cedar Hill Road.
Hi.
Hi.
Amy Momadiri with Dan Stokosa for the applicant with Joey Estates. We were, received the planner's letter regarding the layout and the potential for mitigation for Blending's Turtles. So we are here asking for the planning board to establish a lot count. I understand that's not going to happen tonight, and we need to take into consideration what the planner wrote in the letter. There may be area that needs to be discounted, which would affect the lot count. So we need to readdress that. I reached out to the DEC today to see if there is actually any historic Blending's Turtle sightings in the area, and I haven't received comment back, but...
Okay. All right. So, I mean, I guess you've gotten both the letter from the planner and the engineer, I guess, regarding the site.
I actually don't think I got the, I don't think I got the engineering letter.
You didn't get the engineering letter? Okay.
It's possible I did get it and missed it, but I definitely have the planning letter.
Yeah, because I think too, is with, in relation, there's just, I know in the engineer's letter there is a key point, I guess, shown on the plan, but it wasn't picked up about the number of wells. I guess there's only two wells shown, and there's a statement that five are required. So I guess with all the additional wells, that would also nix out some, probably some other property as well.
Okay.
That would need to be picked up, you know, in the plan.
Okay. So the layout we have, it meets the requirements for the sketch plan. And part of the sketch plan requirements are not, that doesn't include a full SWIP.
Okay. I mean, we have, I mean, I understand. I think, well, John, with this, I mean, obviously a lot of these items were put on here as if it was a full submission.
Right.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And we did have that conversation earlier that, you know, basically this is a sketch plan.
Right.
And not a full, but again, it's, the SWIP items probably don't apply, but anything that might, you know, come into play regarding, you know, the usage of the land...
We just need enough information to know that it can work as it's laid out.
Okay.
Not, we're not expecting a full SWIP on a sketch plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's all that's required to establish the, a sketch plan is all that's required per the code to establish a lot?
Correct, yeah. You don't have to go through full sets of things, but, you know, and again, it's just identifying, you know, the items that need to be identified that are basically considered unusable land, you know, so just steep slopes and items like that.
The one thing, though, that I just noticed is not shown on the easements. Is there a Central Hudson in Mossland, right?
I don't believe there is an easement existing on the property.
Okay.
The Central Hudson, the power lines are adjacent, but it's its own separate...
Okay.
I don't know. I'll look into it, but I don't think that there are any...
It'd be the other one.
Just, yeah, out of curiosity, which power lines run through? It's not the, is that state power authority or is that just Central Hudson?
That's Mossland.
So it's New York State Power Authority?
Yeah, I think, I mean, maybe right, I think it's on the, I mean, it's...
It's on the adjacent property?
It's close. I don't know. It's just, you know...
It is adjacent. It's adjacent on the high side.
Okay.
From what I recall from Dutchess County Parcel Access, it's not on the property. It's adjacent to it.
It's adjacent to it. Right. Okay. Let's just... All right. Okay. Let's see. With, all right, so might as well, is there any other items, John, that you had in your letter that kind of need to get addressed in order to, other than the well issue?
No. I mean, I think the main items that need to be clear on the plan are the steep slopes, the wetlands. And if indeed five wells were going to be required to support this layout, then we need to see all five of them and including their radius of control showing on the plan.
Okay. Malcolm, Germany?
We talked about the Blending's Turtle. We'll need to hear back from the DEC, depending on their answer. That could be nothing. That could be something.
Right.
If we can get a bulk table for it, I know that it's a lot of lots, but I'm guessing that you have that information to save me from having to double-check every frontage and every, you know. Keep an eye out in the R80. I noticed one lot is labeled as 79 instead of 80 or above.
Okay.
I think adjacent lots are 80 or above. And so I think, I think you can, you can move that around. You can make that whole, but that'll need to be corrected.
Okay.
I just wanted to raise that to your attention. I knew that that would come out in the bulk table, but keep an eye out for that. You have an area labeled on the plans as intermittent wet area?
Yeah.
And I see that that hatching is used in other places. It's labeled in one place. Have you had a wetland specialist go out?
No, we haven't, but I was looking at the Towns generated wetland maps. There's no wetlands on this site according to the DEC or the Towns wetland mapping.
All right. So there is federal wetland along the northern property line. It comes in.
Yeah.
We'll need to have that shown on the plans.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea to have, given the presence of the intermittently wet area, and that that could, at the very least, change the way that the roads are being laid out. If the roads need to change, that could change how the lots are laid out and what the lot count is. So I think we need to have a wetland specialist go out and do a wetland report.
Okay.
Find out if there are town-regulated wetlands on the site, where they are, how large they are. Feeding into that, you know, sort of between the bulk table and the wetland area, what I'll look for in the bulk table is compliance with Section 24018 D2. That's talking about minimum lot area and how that is calculated.
Okay.
And that can just be, you know, additional information on the bulk table just to verify that the proposed lots are all code compliant.
Okay.
And, you know, we received an EAF. The EAF presents this as a conventional subdivision. I've, it's Type 1 action. I've recommended to the board that we move, that we begin to move forward with SECRE as though this is a conventional subdivision to discuss whether or not we would like to serve as lead agency. So I am getting the feeling that you would like to weigh in on this.
We think the Town Board's...
Would you like, would you like us to hold off on that?
Yes. First of all, before I say more, thank you for taking our request seriously to try to help us in a process that the Town Board clearly doesn't, hasn't really established yet for us. So I just want to reiterate, we're trying, I appreciate the engineer's comments as well. Personally, I think until we've heard from the Town Board as to whether or not the Town Board will give this planning board the ability to change or to, to change or modify the bulk requirements in this application, I don't know how you can go to SECRE because you don't have a final understanding of what it's going to look like. If the Town Board comes back and says, look, we don't care about the fact that you can save open space and you can save species, and we can do this with less roadways. We just want you to do it conventionally, then that's what we'll do with SECRE. But if the Town Board comes back and says, I'd like the planning board to weigh in and see if we can make this a better project and save open space and save species and save wetlands and save less road, then that would be a different SECRE. And I'm not suggesting to you that I know how to do this better than anyone else in this room. You all know better than I. But it just seems to me it makes sense to hear from the Town Board before you settled in on a plan that you would circulate to see who would be lead agency. That's my only suggestion, not, not...
Which is...
That makes total sense.
Right, which makes sense, because you don't know which direction it's going.
Yeah. I just did not want to...
But again, all, right, by not doing it, it doesn't do anything other than, you know, delay the process in the future, because then you'd have to start it once a, once a decision's been made in which path you're going down. At that point, then we would then circulate for lead agency and then move forward from there. But at that point, you'd have a solidified plan with a lot more detail in order to make those educated decisions.
And I think, you know, we can look at the SECRE handbook and some of the SECRE regulations. I don't, I don't think establishing a lot count necessarily binds anybody to do anything.
Oh, it doesn't at all.
So I don't necessarily think that that requires a SECRE determination. There is a question as to whether or not the Town Board actually requires a SECRE determination, so...
No, my SECRE comment was just in response to an EAF that did not mention any of that, was just presenting this as a conventional subdivision.
Correct.
And I think it does make sense to feel like the Town Board weigh in on that issue.
And for it to be clear which direction this will...
Well, I mean, the way they're presenting it, it's all within their purview anyway, so...
Right.
That has to make sure, but to conventionally come up with a number, we just have to go through this process, the minimal process, and basically what we're doing is we're looking to net out all the unusable land.
Correct.
That's what we're doing, based upon what's allowable per the zoning code as of right today, you know, without any modifications. So, I mean, that's...
And I think with respect to the bulk table, so you want a bulk table showing all of the lot requirements for each lot?
At least things like frontage. I mean, we don't need setbacks to buildings that are, may or may not exist.
Or maybe lot size, lot...
But we need, yeah, exactly.
I understand.
Lot, yeah. Yeah, because I think that's basically what the code requires.
Okay. All right. Any of the board members have any, any questions regarding this at this point?
No.
No? Okay. So I think, I mean, it sounds like you still have a little bit more homework to do to kind of, you know, just identify these couple issues we talked about. I mean, if you can get these items put onto this plan, get it resubmitted, and we can kind of move forward from there.
Okay.
That would be the, I guess, that would, you know, work for trying to move this forward to at least come up with a lot count.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay. With that, let's jump, we got two extensions here to approve or possibly disapprove if you guys don't agree with it. So we have the Hammond-O'Leary-Watowski lot line realignment. They're seeking their third 90-day extension, which will begin on September 1st, 2023, and will run through December 31st, 2023. With that, entertain a motion to approve the extension. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. All favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Second extension is for Myers Run LLC subdivision. They're seeking their third 90-day extension as well, looking for, if granted, they're looking to go again from September 1st, 2023 through December 31st. looking to go again from September 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. I'm just realizing, this is more than, right, this would be more than the 90 days then, correct?
It would need to be December to November.
These would be, yeah. So it's actually to December 1st. So the 90 days will run from September 1st to December 1st. Entertain a motion to approve the extension.
I'll make that again.
Okay. Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So just going back, I mean, for the record, I guess the Hammond-O'Leary is also from September 1st to December 1st as well. Assuming that will be correct. All right. Okay. So with all of that said this evening, is there anything else we need to discuss? Okay. Seeing there's none.
Can I, just a second?
I'm sorry. Excuse me, sir. We're not open, we didn't open the floor for public hearing tonight because we didn't have a public hearing scheduled.
No, I understand it. I would like to know if we can make a public hearing.
When this, when that, in regard to the application that was here, when that moves forward, and again, the process that's going on right now is just to come up with a conceptual lot count, which is as of right out of the zoning code. So meaning single-family homes on that property. They're trying to get a, come up with a conceptual lot count, and once we go through this process and we agree on a number, they're looking to go back and to the town board to try to get an approval for something different than single-family homes, which is also allowed under the zoning code, but it has to be approved by the town board. At that point, whichever project they decide to go through with and move forward with, we will have public hearings for either of those projects and you will have your opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. So, again, with that, we have no other items to discuss this evening as a board.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.